Good evening. As Vice Chairperson of the Hartford Board of Education, I hereby call the September sixteenth, twenty twenty-five regular meeting to order. I wish to extend a warm welcome to everyone present and to our television viewers. The Board, Superintendent, and I are pleased that you have joined us as we celebrate achievement, review information, and make policy decisions related to the effective operation of Hartford Public Schools. This is a regular meeting, and all items that will be discussed or voted on this evening have been posted as required by state law. As the Hartford Board of Education, we are here to set goals, listen to reports of the Superintendent, approve budgets, contracts, and personnel appointments, and make policy for the district. We are not here to make management decisions or solve the problems of individuals. Management is the responsibility of the Superintendent. The monthly meetings of the Board are open to the public. They are the time when the Board conducts its business of governing the school system in a public arena. The regular meetings are not meetings with the public. Therefore, comments from the audience will be confined to the time designated for the public to address the Board. Decorum and courtesy are important elements in effective public meetings. Please silence your cell phones or communication devices and refrain from talking while others are speaking. Since it is legally mandated that proceedings be accurately recorded, I may have to ask for order periodically should noise begin to interfere with our recording capabilities, with our recording capabilities. I'm pleased that you have taken this time this evening to join us. We are very proud of this school system, and thank you for your interest in the Hartford Public Schools. Now, this will be read in Spanish.
Buenas noches. El presidente de la Junta de Educación de Hartford ha llamado a orden esta reunión ordinaria de la Junta del dieciséis de septiembre del 2025. Damos una calidad bienvenida a todas las personas presentes y a nuestros televidentes. La Junta y el Superintendente se complace en que se han unido a nosotros para celebrar logros, revisar información, y tomar decisiones relacionadas con el funcionamiento efectivo de las escuelas públicas de Hartford. Esta es una reunión ordinaria, y todos los asuntos que serán discutidos o votados en esta tarde han sido notificados como lo requiere la ley estatal. Como Junta de Educación de Hartford, estamos aquí para establecer metas, escuchar los informes del Superintendente, aprobar los presupuestos, contratos, y nombramientos de personal, y establecer normas para el distrito. No estamos aquí para tomar decisiones administrativas o resolver problemas individuales. La administración es la responsabilidad del Superintendente. Las reuniones mensuales de la Junta están abiertas al público. Son el momento en que la Junta lleva a cabo su tarea de gobernar el sistema escolar en un espacio público. Las reuniones regulares no son reuniones con el público, por lo tanto, los comentarios de la audiencia se limitarán al tiempo designado para el público dirigirse a la Junta. El decoro y la cortesía son elementos importantes en reuniones públicas efectivas, eficaces. Por favor, silencie sus teléfonos celulares o dispositivos de comunicación, y absténgase de hablar mientras otros están hablando. Ya que es mandato legal que los procedimientos sean grabados con precisión, es posible que tengamos que pedir orden periódicamente si el ruido interfiere con nuestras capacidades de grabación. Nos complace que se haya tomado el tiempo para esta tarde para unirse a nosotros. Estamos muy orgullosos de este sistema escolar, y le damos gracias por su interés en las escuelas públicas de Hartford.
Thank you, and now we will have our Chairperson vote. And now I will open up the floor for nominations. Are there any nominations?
I nominate myself Tyrone Walker for Chair of the Hartford Board of Education.
That's Tyrone Walker. Do we have any more nominations for Chairperson?
I nominate Board Member Cory Mills.
We have Cory Mills, and do we have any other nominations for Chairperson?
I'll nominate Board Member Shante Brody.
Shante Brody, and do we have any more nominations for Chairperson?
I nominate myself, Francois Zderastel Ledger.
Do we have any more nominations for Chairperson? No more nominations for Chairperson. So I believe we will close nominations, and we will vote. Congratulations, the new chair is Shante Brody.
Thank you, everyone. So I don't have a speech prepared, so we're gonna go right into our opening statement. But I think our first vice... So we're gonna move on to public comment. Mr. Mills?
Yep, that's me. All right, so, public comment intro. So, we as a Board in collaboration with the Superintendent and District Leadership are committed to cultivating a culture of excellence at Hartford Public Schools. We thank you for taking the time to attend tonight's meeting. We appreciate you coming out to learn more about Hartford Public Schools and for sharing your thoughts and concerns. We have a protocol to track and respond to concerns raised. We want you to know that we take your concerns seriously, and to that end, staff will follow-up within forty-eight hours if follow-up is required via the prepared method of contact the speaker has indicated. As a reminder, you have three minutes to speak. At the two-minute mark, the bell will ring, letting you know that you have one minute left. At the second bell, please wrap up your comments. Now this will be read in Spanish.
Nosotros, la Junta de Educación, en colaboración con el Superintendente y personal del distrito, estamos comprometidos a cultivar una cultura de excelencia en todos los niveles de escuelas públicas en Hartford. Les agradecemos que se hayan tomado el tiempo para asistir a la reunión de la Junta esta noche. Les agradecemos su participación y su deseo de aprender más sobre las escuelas públicas de Hartford, y también por compartir sus pensamientos y preocupaciones. Nosotros tomamos sus preocupaciones muy seriamente, y hemos establecido un protocolo para el seguimiento y respuesta e inequidades planteadas. El personal hará un seguimiento dentro de las cuarenta y ocho horas, si fuera necesario, a través del método de contacto preferido que el orador haya indicado en la hoja de registro. Esa persona investigará su caso y se comunicará con usted dentro de las cuarenta y ocho horas. Les recordamos que tienen tres minutos para hablar. Cuando se han pasado dos minutos, el timbre sonará, dejándole saber que le queda un minuto. Al segundo sonido, por favor, termine su comentario.
Si alguien necesita traducción en español, por favor, acérquese atrás al... Levante su mano y vaya con la señora Alba. Gracias. Angelica Mattkins.
Good evening, members of the Board and Superintendent. My name is Angelica Maddox, I am a parent and a coach helping implement the bottom-up approach with Harvard Pant University and Hartford Public Schools. I want to thank you for putting forward the first reading for the volunteering policy. The goal of involving families and community while protecting students is important and needed, but as written or proposed, some of the language could work against those very goals. The draft leans heavily on protection, but the tone makes volunteers feel more like risk to be managed than partners to be welcome. If we want more involvement, the invitation has to feel like trust, not suspicion. The section on removal uses vague terms like inappropriate or detrimental behavior. Without clear examples, one school might treat a situation very differently from another. That inconsistency opens doors to personal bias in how staff interpret those behaviors. Authority is scattered between principals, staff, coordinators, and safety team, a symptom of no clear structure. Without a defined process for decisions or appeals, families are left guessing where to turn. Placement is said to be based on qualifications, availability, and school needs, and requires staff consent. That puts too much discretion in individual hands. One staff member may welcome parents while another may keep them out. And this policy as proposed allows for that. And what exactly are qualifications? If I'm expected to be qualified, then the district has a responsibility to qualify me with clear training, clear expectations, and real support. Otherwise, qualifications become gatekeeping instead of a pathway for families to be involved. Orientation is also reactive, provided only after approval. A proactive standardized orientation upfront would set expectations fairly and prepare all volunteers equally. In summary, this draft has good intentions, but our school lacks consistent structures and expectations for volunteers. Without standard guidelines or SOPs, decisions will keep varying from one school to another. Families should feel like trusted partners in our school, not risk to be managed. Volunteers don't need more barriers, they need clear structure and real support. Thank you.
Hi, Cynthia Enni.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome, Superintendent. Good evening, everyone. Welcome, Superintendent. And Board Members, welcome back. It's a new year, right? I'm hoping you all feel the energy, and making sure that everyone in your staff, in the city in general, are feeling that same energy to get back to work. So, I'm Hiya Cynthia Enni again, and I'm a community leader. And for those of you who don't know me, I had three children that went through the school system, the Hartford Public School system, and they are all hold a doctor title. All right, so I'm here to speak in general on consolidation. And you have to, you know, be strong about doing something. We have too many high schools in our district, and we can't afford to keep them all open. You have schools that were built for eight or nine hundred kids with two hundred or three hundred. I'm asking the Superintendent, the Board Members, to come together and start looking at a study to figure out which school we should be consolidating on, especially the high school, the magnet school in general. Our kids are being stretched so thin, our staff is stretched so thin. They don't need to lose their job. We can bring them together in one building, like we do at Weaver, and like we used to do at Hartford High. And now we are going to have Buckley open. We need to figure out how we can come together. As we know all, most of our budget is going into transportation, so we need to seriously address that. This is hard time when we have to look at hard things. And all, as a Superintendent, all you need to do is explain it to parents. It's all come down to quality of education that we have in our building. And as we talk about sending our kids into the suburbs for education, I'm not sure if we haven't gotten it yet to see where we can get good quality education in the city of Hartford. If we only make sure we have quality in our building, all the humanity that kids think they're going out in the suburb to get, we need to show it right in Hartford here. And because we have too many buildings, well, we are stretched thin, so we need to do something about that. And I'm hoping, Superintendent, you will work with your Board and get that study done so we can move forward. All right? All right. And I'm here to support whatever needed. I can help, okay? And make sure your teachers are getting the support they need. Your principals are getting the support they need. They don't need to be stressed out. I always said, when people are stressed, you cannot get a lot done from them. So please, make sure you're working with your principals and your teachers. And the other thing I wanted to also mention is to do a summit with your teachers, just your teachers. Find out what's working from what's not working. You do not need to reinvent the wheel. All right? So let's do something like that. If you can do that, you're gonna find out that you have a lot of people on your side. Okay? Thank you.
Milli Arciniagas.
Good evening, Superintendent, Dr. Tonsil and honorable Board Members. Chairman, Chairwoman, Shante Brody. It's good to see this. Too many years. Go back twenty-five years, and it's good to see this. We're finally here. And I say that because, I don't know if I said my name, Milli Arciniagas, from Hartford Parent University. I say that because there were women before us that led this effort on parent engagement. And myself and many other parents learned from them, and here we are today. And I'm proud, I'm proud that Ms. Shante Brody is now Chairman of the Board. So, with that said, I want to talk about a couple of things tonight. One, welcome, Dr. Tonsil. It was great having our thirty-minute meeting. Hopefully, there'll be more. And I hope that we can get Title I to where it needs to be. I don't think it's there yet, and I want to work with you to ensure that there is a conference, a Title I conference for parents, so that parents can learn what their children in each grade have to learn, right? Way back then, we had brochures, and it was nice. It was nice to have those conferences so that parents can know what Title I is providing for their children, so. And then the other thing that I wanted to talk about is data sharing. I know there's been a lot of talk about data sharing between school officials, school district, and nonprofits, and even at the state level, there's a public act out there that allows for data to be shared. But what parents are struggling with is, you know, how is that being done? When they enroll their kids, it asks them if there's like an option. Do you want your data shared with the Hartford Youth Bureau? They don't know who that is, so they don't know what they're checking off on. And then on top of that, they don't know how to opt out, if they want to opt out. So I think, you know, we can work together, trying to help those families understand it better on how their data is shared, and who sees what, and how is it aggregated, so that parents can, you know, go to those services without having to think where their data is at. Thank you.
Mike Saucy?
There we go. That's okay, you guys know who I am anyway. First off, I want to actually start off on a good note, and that Superintendent, you've made your way to Hartford High today. And you got to see some of the great teachers at our school. I know that, it was actually a good timing that you came in because Ms. Medina was starting Hispanic Heritage Month, so you saw her all dressed up. And she really goes, she really puts a lot into that, into those four weeks, and the students love it. And I know that you also visited our engineering and you pathway, and you visited our allied health pathway, and you can see what we offer at the school and what opportunities the kids have in our building. And also, I heard that, correct me, I heard that you came in on a scooter? I'm still trying to visualize that, but, you know, you have a parking spot, but that's okay. You, you do you. So what I want to talk about is actually something that's not necessarily on campus. It's on, we have to, as teachers, we have two options. It's, we park on Fourth Street, or we park on a satellite lot, which is a third of the mile away from the building. I wholeheartedly go into the satellite lot because I despise parallel parking, but, and there's a few colleagues of mine who do. Now, there is a parking agreement that was signed, obviously not under you, but under the previous mayor, under the previous Superintendent. There are two copies, one from twenty twenty-one to twenty-two, and one from twenty-two to twenty-three. So, I'm not sure if necessarily this is on the Board or the Superintendent on your radar, but let me just read you some of the things in there that are supposed to happen and address, and tell you what's not being done. So, we're supposed to be given spaces for a hundred eighty vehicles for staff with key cards to go into a gantry in a gated lot. The gantry does not exist, the gate does not close. The city is supposed to be in charge of, it's supposed to be open from the hours of six AM to six PM, so it's to allow, not allow people from, in the community to park in the lot. That does not happen. The majority of the cars in that lot are from people who park, who live in South Marshall and they'll park in the parking lot. So let me tell you the responsibilities from the city. They are supposed to be in charge of lighting, sweeping, snow removal. I have pictures, and I can send them to you from Monday, from Monday morning of a glass bottle of alcohol in the parking lot. There is glass all over the place in the parking lot. I have to make sure that I do not drive over the glass, or, God forbid, hit the bottle. They're in charge of opening and closing the gate, that does not happen. And also, I did find this out because people had been asking me, is who is responsible for the damages? So if somebody breaks into my car, the city is responsible for that, and that's according to this contract, and I know I'm overtime. The only thing that Aetna is responsible for, because this is an Aetna lot, is they are in charge of utilities, so paying ever-source, and the gate control system, which I can tell you that last year, there was a period of time where that thing was broken, and I actually moved it out so that I can get my car out. So, my last speaking point on this is, this cost from when this contract was signed was a hundred twenty-five thousand dollars. As of now, it is over a hundred fifty thousand dollars. So, and I was here last year talking about my position. I got paid last year fifty-one thousand dollars. So we're saying we're paying three times the salary of a teacher for that lot, and it's not being taken care of. And I just find that appalling. I've tried to go through many different channels to get this solved, and this is essentially my last resort, is putting out public record for you guys to see what you can do about it. I apologize, I'll make up for it next month and do a little short thing.
Melvin Colon?
Distinguished Members of the Board of Education and friends. I am a former resident of the city of Hartford, and I also served as the Chair of the Hartford School Building Committee for five or six years. I was delighted to see on the agenda the renaming of the Classical Magnet School. I, one of my, I lived a long-term resident, I was a long-term resident of the city of Boston, and one of my biggest disappointments while I lived there was that Boston did not hire Mr. LaFontaine as school superintendent, and hired someone else who didn't do as good a job as I'm sure Mr. LaFontaine would have done. Mr. LaFontaine has been a national and international pioneer in bilingual education. He established the first complete master's program in bilingual education at NYU, and he was the first head of bilingual, of the bilingual education program for the city of New York School Board. He helped found and served as President of the National Association of Bilingual Education, NABE, and he was the longest-serving Superintendent. And when he came to Hartford to become Superintendent, he was the longest-serving Superintendent of the city of Hartford. One of his many contributions to Hartford was to establish a computer, to establish computer-based education. He established also the Classical Magnet School, which is on today's agenda. After leaving his post as Superintendent, he served, he ran and won a seat on the City Council, and eventually became City Council President. He's never left Hartford, and he educated his two sons in the Hartford school system. Having a school named after you is a really big honor. You have to do something really extraordinary. You have to have extraordinary qualities and do extraordinary... You have to have extraordinary qualities and do extraordinary things, um, and make extraordinary contributions to, to deserve such an honor. Mr. LaFontaine has left a record of accomplishment, contribution, dedication, service of such magnitude, uh, to merit, uh, having a school named after him. Thank you.
Anthony de Jesus.
Shut it off. Good evening, distinguished board members and Superintendent Townsend. My name is, uh, Dr. Anthony de Jesus. I'm a professor of social work at the University of St. Joseph. I'm a resident of Hartford and, um, former school governance council chair at Annie Fisher Montessori Magnet School, uh, where my daughter is, um, a student. And I'd like to add to the support that, um, Mr. Melvin Colong has provided for the renaming of Classical Magnet School after Dr. Hernán LaFontaine, the first Puerto Rican superintendent of the city of Hartford. Um, my wife, uh, Dr. Madeline Perez and I co-authored an article in, uh, 2009 in the Centro Journal, the Center for Puerto Rico Studies Journal, that documented the work of Dr. LaFontaine in New York City as the founder of the first bilingual school in New York City and, uh, a leader in the movement for bilingual education in New York City and nationally. Um, certainly as a, as a New Year Rican, I'm, uh, very proud of that. But my daughter is a Hartford Rican and, uh, she attends the school that's named after the first woman superintendent of the Hartford Public Schools. And, uh, we certainly would like her to consider being, uh, a student at the first, um, at, at, at the Hernán LaFontaine Classical Magnet School. So, um, I add my support and thank you very much for your consideration.
Raquel Calderon.
Good evening, Dr. Townsend and good evening, Board of Directors. My name is Raquel Calderon and I am a substitute teacher in the, for the Hartford Public Schools. I'm primarily here to, to thank you, to the, to Dr. Townsend. I heard, uh, comments that he had visited several schools and I'm happy about that. And secondly, I'm here to support the change of name of Classical Magnet School to, I have the name written down here. It's, um, to Hernán LaFontaine. And I have found that, that he is one of the, the most important things that he, that he is the one who initiated this school. It was his idea to, for the establishment of the Classical Magnet School. And it is the same school that you, that you are going to vote tonight to, to see whether you're going to change the name or not. And I hope you do. I am here in support of that. And the reason is, uh, that changing the name of Classical Magnet School is, is really important. They are, they, they have contributed a lot in Hartford, for the Hartford children. And they are contributing a lot in Hartford. I, uh, Dr. Sullivan used to be the principal and he worked really hard there. And now it's, it's, uh, Ms. Sullivan and, uh, they are doing excellent job. I do substitute there once in a while and I, and I love it. And I hope you will support to change the name. Good night.
Michael Downs.
Good evening, board members and superintendent, Dr. Townsend. Um, my name is Michael Downs. I live at 74 Rosemont Street in Hartford. And I'm glad to see that one of my neighbors was elected chair of the Board of Education this evening. Yeah, it's about time. She's been on the board a long time and she has a lot of experience. I'm sure she'll do a good job. Shante, congratulations. Um, I, I support also finally we're getting to name the Classical Magnet School after Hernán LaFontaine. Very good man. I, I was a substitute teacher. He became a superintendent. I, I was a substitute teacher about six months before he became superintendent. Um, I also want to remind the, uh, Dr. Townsend, uh, that the school system still has no vocational technical education. We used to have that. We have no, uh, Family Consumer Science, we used to have that. We used to have a, a full contingency of music art library. We don't have that now. Um, and, uh, we also had plenty of extracurricular activities, especially in the high schools. We don't have that now. We need that. And, uh, there's money, um, $550 million that's owed by the state still that the city hasn't collected. Uh, there's, uh, the state should be paying for the state. Encouraged the, the, uh, was actually in, uh, in charge of, uh, of, uh, of, uh, bringing the schools together and, uh, and, um, they, uh, they should be taking over the, um, transportation, $30 million transportation to the city of Hartford. Um, and, uh, to promote integration, which is very important. It was a long time overdue when they passed that, uh, um, that bill. Uh, that, uh, that wasn't a bill, it was a court decision. Um, so also, uh, I want to, uh, if we're going to start combining schools and closing schools, we need to move some of these magnet schools into the regular high schools. We spent a lot of money renovating our three high, major high schools. Weaver High, Harvard High and Buckley High School. We need to move some, and there's not enough students in there. They have to, have, well, you have to move some of our, uh, combine some of our magnet schools, our magnet high schools into the regular school system. Um, and also, uh, in the newspaper this, uh, this past week, it mentioned the privatization of special education. We got to look into that. I think we have to stop privatizing some of our special ed students that are taking it over ourselves. Thank you.
Alisa Peterson.
Good evening, Board of Education members and welcome Superintendent Townsend and congratulations, Ms. Brody. Um, I've read articles about your success elsewhere and thank you for transferring to our perpetual problem child that we lovingly call home, Hartford, Connecticut. I come to Board of Ed meetings infrequently, whereas I used to be a regular attendee decades ago when we were under state control and later Horton Chef oversight. I am newly concerned that the prior illegality of socially promoting kids who couldn't read or perform basic math has, that landed us under such strict control and oversight has returned. It's only a matter of time before the latest painful truths come out via investigations or lawsuits. It happens every time in Hartford, I assure you. I separately had hopes that Mayor Aralampalam was serious about restoring neighborhood schools because former Mayor Bronin totally ignored them and sent his children for private education. Sadly, I don't think this one-term mayor has time on his side. So I am here to implore you, Superintendent Townsend, to take a thoroughly fresh look at our schools, their locations, their budgets. I do believe a focus on AI can make a difference. I'm hoping the mayor's new AI working group will undertake the Board of Education as a practical experiment to help rid us of expensive software and corporate subscriptions and consultants so we can create our own basic curriculum and achieve other cost-saving efficiencies. Another request is for you to take a fresh look at our out-of-town campuses in East Hartford and Manchester. Specifically, there is an opportunity to give back the Pathways Academy building to Goodwin University, bring those teachers and staff and funding back to our neighborhood schools in exchange for creating a bigger tech magnet program that more Hartford students can attend that features aviation and flight operation and defense manufacturing technologies. A 1.5 million state study strongly suggests Hartford's Brenner Airport and our, strongly supports Hartford's Brenner Airport. And our governor just hired a new chief manufacturing officer whose focus is high school tech education and training so our future graduates can get higher-paying jobs at manufacturers throughout the state. Working with Goodwin University can help realize these dual opportunities. To sum up, I am going to pay very close attention as to how this board and you, Dr. Townsend, handle prior illegal, um, prior allegations of illegal social promotion. Second, we need to hear how AI can be deployed for cost-saving efficiencies. And last, I will be in touch to get budget numbers for these two out-of-town campuses. Thank you very much.
Carol Gale.
Good evening. I, I do agree this microphone is pretty bad to hear from back there. But, uh, I'll try and speak loudly. Good evening, members of the board, superintendents in schools, and congratulations, Chairperson Brody. My name is Carol Gale and I'm the president of the Hartford Federation of Teachers. Dr. Townsend, in his first few weeks in Hartford Public Schools, has brought forth, ah, how's that? Is that better back there? Ah, thank you. All right, let me start that paragraph again. Dr. Townsend, in your first short few weeks with Hartford Public Schools, you have brought forth a more positive messaging regarding our school district. My comments this evening are going to be in keeping with that momentum. First, there are many positive reactions across the district to our new seven-hour school day. In speaking with staff from many different schools, the overwhelming response that I receive when asking about the seven-hour day is smiles, thumbs up, and positive feedback. Staff do feel less stressed and they report that students are getting through their day more attentively and with better energy levels throughout the entire day. So hopefully, some staff are even speculating that the reduction in staff from the shorter day may have a positive impact on staff attendance and even hopefully student attendance. Let's hope that speculation bears fruition. And thank you to all of those who worked diligently last year to negotiate this new length of the school day. Second, Dr. Townsend met with the union coalition representing 11 of the unions within the Hartford Public School System for an open and honest dialogue. The meeting ended with the goal of scheduling regular such meetings and we look forward to getting those on our calendar. In previous speeches before this body, HFT has expressed concern over the rising number of grievances that the union has filed. Dr. Townsend, upon hearing this, has set a goal of resolving grievances at the lowest level. HFT welcomes this approach. Also, there is currently a joint effort underway between the union and the district to try and resolve the many outstanding grievances from prior years. We are actually close to having resolved three matters that would otherwise result in arbitrations. So that would be awesome and definitely a step in the right direction. Uh, the district also agreed to combine nine related grievances so as to speed up the time it takes for these grievances to be resolved. These actions illustrate the district's desire to resolve matters, which in turn makes employees feel valued. These are indeed the types of steps forward that can lead to improved staff retention in the district. Dr. Townsend also expressed openness to, of, uh, hearing ideas that can reallocate our resources and reinvest in our schools. This allows our staff at all levels, who best understand the strengths and shortcomings within a building or program, to offer ideas for ways to better utilize our resources and improve upon our models of instruction and service delivery to our students. Finally, I'd like to share some invite insights from a survey recently conducted by the Hartford Current of Best Places to Work. Their findings noted that the most resilient organizations are those with strong cultures rooted in trust, recognition, purpose, and adaptability. These aren't things that happen by accident. They require systems, commitment, and a willingness to evolve. In the spirit of collaboration, HFT stands ready to work towards creating these systems that will evolve Hartford Public Schools to a best place to work and a best place to learn. Thank you.
I look forward to working with you as a council president, um, going forward. Congratulations. And more than anything else, I want to thank you all, every one of you, for your service to the city of Hartford and to the students in the city. I know it's not very easy and the work you have to do. And so it's very appreciative that you're giving of your time to make and honor our students. Um, two things, I wasn't planning on speaking. So I just want to let you know my thoughts. And, um, before I was council president, uh, many, many moons ago, I worked for the city council as a staff. And I remember meeting our superintendent, Mr. Fontaine. It was amazing the way he brought our community and our youth together. So I respectfully ask you, as you consider renaming the school after him, I think he very well deserved it. Um, as a staff again, I say that he was very helpful in bringing our community together. So please respectfully consider that. My other, um, items I want to speak with you on is, uh, school consolidation. We went through a very difficult budget this year. And I am looking forward to working with each and every one of you for the upcoming school year budget. But I will have to say this. I would like to see, uh, some sort of new way of thinking. Not sure how with this, because I, this is not, you guys are Board of Education. It's your fort. Say, I don't, do not know about the education part of it. But I do want to tell you that as a council member and you bring forth your budget, we have to vote on it. And we really and truly need to make sure you, as board members, realize that you are the fiduciary responsibility for our youth in our city. And you need to really consider how you're going to use your funds to provide the best education for our kids. So in summary, I'm looking forward to working with everyone. But I'm also looking forward to seeing if you have a plan for consolidation, working with our parents, working with the city council to go ahead for this fiscal year 26 budget. Thank you.
And our last speaker is Joan Walton.
Good evening, Dr. Townsend and good evening, distinguished board members. Also, good evening to the new board chair. Good evening to all the board members. Uh, your enthusiasm is recognized. Bear with me, I don't feel very well this, today, but I'm going to push through this. Also, good evening to the council members. Also, good evening to the council members. Good evening to the district leaders. Good evening to the supporters of Dr. LaFontaine. You all know how I feel about the renaming of the school building. I'm in agreement with that, but we have to get to the business of today. Dr. Tounsel, you are a breath of fresh air, because you don't notice this, but my guys and gals through this district get to travel throughout the district, and all I hear about is you on that scooter, flying down Main Street in your suit, going to schools, visiting. And I also have pictures that I posted on my union website of you visiting every single person in the school, shaking hands, looking them directly in their eyes, talking to them. So there's a very real part of you that people are starting to notice, and that's very welcoming. And why I mention that is because, and I'm going to dig a little deep here and be a little preachy. There are two major religions in our country, Christianity and Islam. And ironically, both of the prominent figures in both of those belief systems are just common people. One, Muhammad, was an orphan, and Christ was born in a manger. So I know this particular board, and I can tell in people in the audience, I have a very vast Christian belief background. And why I say this is because it amazes me that we, you know, celebrate Christ, who was actually born to a carpenter, who is a tradesman, and I represent the trades, and a regular lady and mary. And why I say that is because a lot of times we forget that a lot of the good advice and things that we need to know to fix things come from common people, not from titles, not from accolades, and not from accomplishments. And for a long time, Local 566 has been forgotten, not recognized as 80 percent -- over 80% of them are Hartford residents. And they're the exact stakeholders that this board helps represent, makes decisions for, and their children. They're staples in the community. And we need to start readjusting our thinking. And Dr. Tounsel, you have begun that work by changing the culture. And we've had a culture here where we build from the top down. And if you talk to any engineer, he would never tell you to build a structure from the top down. But yet in Hartford, we continuously, continuously build from the top down, not realizing that we should be building from the bottom up, the foundation up, to create something strong enough to stand. We have some of the most talented people in all the titled positions, yet forgetting that in order to make sure that our kids are successful, we have to start from the ground. The people that they see that are not certified, the people who served them in nutrition, the people who help keep the lights on so they can read the books, the people who are what I call the forgotten. And a lot of times, I have a vision that I think is shared with some of the people on your facility side, especially the COO, of making sure that all of the people that we represent, that work here, that are non-certified, that I represent, are looked at as educators as well, because that's what they really are. They're the -- they're the structure and the backbone of why these schools stay open, stay clean, stay safe. When you walked into the schools, you know, none of the schools have a self-clean button. It was somebody who actually had to work hard. And what I respected about you, Dr. Tounsel, when we had our meeting, you said, "My dad grew up on the -- while working on the assembly line." So I'm sure you heard stories when he came home about how things were operating when he was working. And those were real tangible stories for you to understand that his work contributed to the greater work of building cars that Americans could drive throughout this country. And that's what we're doing here as well. I know you have put the charge on your team to make sure that we're treated well in our contract negotiations, and I see that, and I'm hearing that. And things are looking to go in the right direction, and you have a lot on your plate to try to steer this ship into the right direction. What I just want to say to you and to this group is let's stop forgetting the forgotten people. Let's make sure we highlight them as educators. And as one lady spoke in the audience about changing the educational structure to include things in the industries that have real-life rewards immediately, like good-paying jobs and good futures and hands-on in building their community, because that's a real investment. That's what's going to attract the enrollment back into Hartford Public Schools, because we're going to be meeting children at the areas that they want to be at. Yes, we can give them a broader education, but if we don't meet their needs, and I've repeated this a million times, if we don't meet them where they are, if we don't start addressing their basic needs where they are, we lose them. We also want to be attractive to the kids that are forgotten in other districts, because not every kid is going to be able to go to college, and not every kid is going to be able to be a superintendent or be a professional in the educational realm. So we're going to need to start attracting kids from other districts that have been forgotten and bring them into Hartford to increase our enrollment and to show them a future. Hartford's a melting pot. I'm sorry I'm running over my time, but Dr. Tounsel, I know you have a lot on your plate. This board has a lot on your plate. I thank you for your time. I thank you for your efforts, and I appreciate, actually, the choice you made.
Thank you, everyone who offered up public comment. As a reminder, all of our reports, including our full committee reports, student reports, all attachments and videos in the meeting agenda is in the meeting agenda on Board Docs. All committee and workshop meetings are live-streamed as well as viewable after the meeting. The YouTube links are saved in each meeting's agenda, and I highly encourage the community to view the meetings and read the reports when possible. If you have any questions or feedback, please contact Christina Santiago, our board liaison, at csantiago@hartfordschools.org. And we'll move on to the report of our superintendent.
Thank you and congratulations, Chair Brody. Is it Brody or Brody?
Brody.
Thank you, Chair Brody. Ladies and gentlemen, first of all, good evening. Very excited to be at my second school board meeting. Let me share. I'm within my first 100 days of listening and learning across Hartford Public Schools and the greater Hartford community. So, so you know, I've visited 35 of our 39 schools. I think it's important to have boots on the ground and see for yourself the things that you hear, and I'm doing exactly that. I'm learning a lot, I'm listening a lot, and my goal and plan is to ultimately share with our Board of Education, the community, what I've learned and what themes emerge so we can have a plan moving forward to align with our already strategic plan and other things that we're talking about or considering, such as consolidation, et cetera. But I'm listening, I'm learning, because someone also said previously, "The goal is not to reinvent the wheel, it's probably to make it roll better than it has." So I just want to share that. Moving on, Senator Richard Blumenthal. Shout out to him. I have an opportunity to do a press conference with him at Martin Luther King Middle School about the RAES Act. And the goal is to find an opportunity to use a tax source down the line to put $15,000 in the hands of all of our teachers. So keep your ears open for that. I think anytime we're talking about putting money in the pockets of our educators, that's something to lean into. So I want to share that and pre-message that right here with this community. I'd like to give a major shout-out to Calling Our Brothers. Pastor A.J. Johnson, the gentleman across the community stepped up for 10 years in a row. If you do not recall, Calling Our Brothers, they clap young people in on the first days of school. And it's been a practice that's been duplicated across our country. So when you see on the news or on CNN, these brothers or sisters, whomever, clapping against young people, that started right here. So a major shout-out to our Calling Our Brothers organization locally, because every day of the first week of school, they were out welcoming young people into our campuses, and that's how you set the bar and set the tone for what to expect as far as engaging young people. I want to share the results of the Summer Reading Challenge. I'm proud to share the results of the 2025 Reading Challenge. One city and many stories. We had a total registration of 2,259 students who read for 1.2 million minutes, and that's 20,000 hours of reading. Congratulations to our schools with the highest number of reading registration, which is sand, with 318 students registered. And kudos to all of our other schools who participated. And I do want you to know, ladies and gentlemen, it is very important that we lean into literacy. When we talk about our student achievement, anytime somebody's talking negative about Hartford student attendance, they're talking about our literacy scores and our mathematics scores. So initiatives like this is very important. And one thing I shared with our elementary principals is that I'll be doing my Read Across Hartford tour at every one of our schools, promoting the importance of literacy and getting our young people engaged in all types of books. And I really get into character, so I hope no one films that. But it's going to be a real good time with our young people. Let me give an update. So when you think of Hartford Public Schools, there's no doubt that we have challenges, but the goal is to support our families and meet them where they are to give their young people the best education possible. So I would like to give you an update from our Welcome Center to let you know what we're dealing with and how we're supporting our families. We processed and triaged so far this year 1,138 intakes for services and information for the month of August. The top 10 reasons for our intakes were the following: homelessness, transportation issues, uniform assistance, clothing, school supplies, bus passes, student transfer requests, enrollment, school records. And we're going to continue to provide those resources. So I ask us all to signal-boost the message that we have support at all of our schools to support our young people with what they need. See, when everyone wants to talk down on Hartford Public Schools is about the challenges that we face. And I'd like to shout out all the educators and anybody who contribute to our school system to ensure that we meet our young people where they are and give them the resources to be successful. So shout-out to our Welcome Center and any educator in Hartford Public School that's adding value to our young people. I want to update you on the strategic partnership we have with our community-based organizations and our workforce development program. For this academic year, '25-'26, Hartford Public School has engaged so far with 27 community-based organizations to provide services to students, where 18 of them have solidified their partnerships via an MOU or Memorandum of Understanding, as well as five organizations with a focus on career and workforce development. We will continue to work through these processes with these organizations. We do have, if you go on our agenda, a full report on all of our partnerships, so you can see what we're doing. The goal is to be as transparent as we possibly can be. And while being transparent, let me say, I never discourage public comment or accountability. I'd rather you tell me where the weaknesses are so we can address that and get better over time. We're not dodging no smoke. We want to just fix whatever it is to be fixed and be the best that we can possibly be. And let me share this. On tomorrow and Thursday, I'm doing a community listening session. Very specifically, tomorrow, I'll be with the North Hartford Ascend Community Conversation at Milner Middle School, starting at 6:00 PM. I encourage any and everyone who's available to show up there. We will have dinner provided, refreshments, translation services. It's an opportunity to just chop it up, to just get down in the grassroots and talk about whatever it is that's on your hearts and minds. So far, if you go online, there's an opportunity to register ahead of time, but if you do not register, just show up. We will find our best way to accommodate you and ask anything that's on the tablet of your heart so we can address that. And on Thursday, we'll be at Sanchez School, same time. Registration starts at 5:30, but we start the program at 6:00 with dinner refreshments, childcare, translation services, and an opportunity to collect. And before I park my bus, I want to give a -- another public service announcement with regards to why you should probably choose Hartford Public Schools. We all hear about the Hartford Promise, but I don't know how much we understand about the Hartford Promise. When I talk to the leadership at Hartford Promise, there's so much money every single year left on the table. I'm talking millions of dollars. If you go to a Hartford Public School, if you live in the city of Hartford, if you only maintain a 3.0 grade point average and come to school with a 93% attendance rate, ladies and gentlemen, you are guaranteed up to $100,000 in scholarship money to a school of your choice, not limited to a school in Connecticut, a school of your choice. I don't know how we don't understand how much of an added value that is. And I understand sometime, in some cases, possibly, trust has been lost along the years. But I'm asking us to reinvest. I mean, I can come in and wave the white flag and just close schools, but why? We have 3,000, 4,000 students choosing to go elsewhere. The goal is to make Hartford Public School the best system possible, and we won't have to worry about what are we consolidating or closing, because the goal is to have an overflow, and I do believe in that. So we're going to do the research 100% and see what it means to consolidate, see what the data says. How much money can we possibly save? What's the best way forward? But also, we're going to try to provide the best system possible and hope over time, we choose Hartford Public School. When I say "we choose," and this is a reality, I talk to us all, the reality is we do also have employees that live in Hartford and send kids elsewhere. And I get it, at some point along the line, trust was lost. But it takes all of us, my approach is team, teamwork. But here's a threat when it comes to team. You can just sit on the sideline and watch and not participate. So although there's no "I" in "team," if we want to win, the "I" is in the "win." That means every individual, you do what you're supposed to do, and look at the scoreboard, it would probably take care of itself. The enrollment would take care of itself when the pedagogy is where it's supposed to be, when the climate and culture is where it's supposed to be, where the fiscal responsibility is where it's supposed to be, then that trust come back. We have trees falling in the forest all the time and no one hearing it. eSports at all of our schools, where they can get scholarships and go off into college by participating in electronic sport competitively. So many great things happening, but the good news do not spread like the bad news. So I'm asking you, as long as you're engaged, if you see that good news occurring, I need us all to signal-boost the message so the rest of our lives can be the best of our lives, specifically to Hartford Public School. So with that, I will park my bus. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent. We're now going to move on to the business agenda. And first up, we have item 4.1. And what a pleasure to do this on my first night as chair. The stars aligned on this one, renaming Classical Magnet School. The motion is that the Hartford Board of Education rename the Classical Magnet School to Hernan LaFontaine Classical Magnet School. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
I'll ask our policy chair, Board Member Fortune, to lead us into this discussion, possibly.
My pleasure, Madam Chair. I remember joining the board and being handed the packet that Mrs. LaFontaine had submitted to the board prior to five of us joining this board and reading about Dr. LaFontaine and then speaking to his wife about him, his legacy and what he has contributed. And what I've observed is everyone who's been new to the conversation, when they learn about him, the work that he's done, how he's poured his heart and soul into Hartford Schools and then Hartford City Council, and has been so incredibly invested through friends who went to schools in Hartford. They've talked about remembering Dr. LaFontaine and remembering his children going to the schools and how the only phone number that was not in the phone books at the time was the superintendent's phone number, because everyone would be calling. Everyone seems to remember him fondly, and I have taken on that fondness. I have appreciated hearing from so many people, from so many walks of life, over decades of his tenure and decades of his career. And it is an absolute privilege to be able to share more about this vote and have gotten to know Dr. LaFontaine through the various testimonies, through speaking with his wife, through reading about him. And it is a tremendous legacy that he has left. It's also not lost upon me and upon this board, I believe, that history serves to not only inform who we are in the present, but also to teach us about how we can be better and stronger in the future. And Dr. LaFontaine has really planted strong seeds. He's planted trees that have shaded so many of us. He's planted trees that have shaded so many of us along the way, so many Hartford students along the way, and honoring his legacy by renaming Classical Magnet after him is certainly well-deserved, well-earned, and it's a privilege to be part of a school system that he's contributed so much to.
Thank you for that, Board Member Fortune. Does any other board members have any comments they would like to make? Corey, Mr. Mills?
Before I start, I'm gonna vote yes, just in case, I need to say that out loud. I'm not gonna lie to you, though, I was originally very hesitant about this, mostly for incredibly selfish reasons, right? So like, I went to University High, and as every single board member who went to Weaver, about three of you, knows, there's sometimes a rivalry that exists amongst schools here. So as a proud graduate of University High School, our rival, in so much that we could be rivals with anybody, was Classical Magnet. And I say, we couldn't really be rivals, because we played soccer against them and lost every single time. So I am slightly bitter about that still to this day, but as UHS is a small school, we did not have our own swim team, so I had to swim for Classical Magnet. So I was technically and officially a gladiator when I was swimming. So I was really proud of that, so I think there's a small apartment that didn't want to lose that name, the classical name is sort of important to me, even just terms of my own villain arc story. But having met, you know, Dr. LaFontaine and hearing from his wife every single board meeting since we've gotten here, I just want to say that it's incredibly inspiring for me as someone who, you know, is from the city and has worked for the city of Hartford for nine years, I aspire to such a lengthy career and dedication to this community, as I have seen from you. So I just want to point out that it's incredibly inspiring, so you and your family have absolutely deserved this, this very high honor. So, the end.
Board Member Distro Lederer?
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. I wanted to say, this is an exciting opportunity to vote on the adding the name, the renaming of Classical Magnet School. I love to see people get their flowers while they're here. It's an honor to be able to be part of this. Dr. LaFontaine has done tremendous work. The community has benefited from Classical Magnet. The students have benefited. I recall attending or participating in the graduation a few years ago, and as board members were able to help facilitate the graduation, and I remember sitting on the dais, and it reminded me of my high school experience. Unfortunately, I didn't attend Hartford Public Schools, I attended private schools, and it was very striking. Striking to me, it seemed as though this was a private school, so it was like a private, a public school with a private school experience, if you will. The students were excited, the speakers were excited, and now I have a child who attends Classical Magnet, so it's, I feel like history, history is being made, and, you know, I'll say to Mr. Mills, Board Member Mills, once a gladiator, always a gladiator. So even if the name is added, which it's gonna be definitely an honor, you'll always be a gladiator. Thank you.
Any other comments? I don't see any hands. So the motion on the floor is that the Hartford Board of Education rename the Classical Magnet School to Hernan LaFontaine Classical Magnet School. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Any abstentions? The ayes have it, the motion moves. Mr. LaFontaine, do you have any words you want to share? This light is so bright, we can't see. Mr. LaFontaine, are you here? Do you want to offer us words?
And I just cannot give my usual five-hour speech, but I do have to concentrate on one thing, and that's only to give my appreciation and thank you to four categories. I want to tell you quickly, I came to Hartford, total stranger. I knew nobody, no one knew me. And I came to Hartford, and I began to see people, and the people who I saw, the Hartford Board of Education. They were the ones who said, "Let's take a chance on this guy," even though he's another New York City slicker. But they said, and I can tell you today to the extent that my memory holds on, Kurt Clements, Maria Sanchez, right, Kate Campbell, Sue Ginsburg, Bob Buckley, Wayne Casey, I remember those people like it was yesterday. They took a chance on me, and it worked, and it kept going, and it just was wonderful, and I loved it. And after that, you know, everything, the staff that I had, the cabinet members, you know, the assistant superintendents, the bench shots and so on, sometimes they were a little concerned about perhaps my abrupt ways, but as a matter of fact, Mr. Superintendent, when I said, "I'm gonna be visiting all of the schools," all of the schools, they said, "Well, you can't do that." Yes, I can. And we did it, and within the first year, I had, I personally had escorted more than five hundred people through the school, because I had a plan with, in those days, the bishops of the Hartford, big shots in the insurance, and I told them point-blank, "You can criticize, you can advise, you can recommend, you can do anything you think is appropriate, you know, with the school and so on, but if you haven't visited a school in Hartford, I'm not gonna be paying attention to you." And then I invited them, very simple, seven-thirty in my office, "You pick whatever school you want, I don't care, we won't tell anybody, we're just gonna go there," and surprise, surprise, we're gonna be there, and that was marvelous for everybody, even though a couple of them were a little scared, standing out during the period, change of period in the high school, but, you know, that was good. That board, the staff, all of the people that were involved in helping me create the classical magnet, the classical program. After I came back from Washington, we did it. Pulled them together, everybody concerned about their things, we did it. All of those people deserve tremendous credit. It went from a little program in one school to a big, big school, and now we're at this kind of stage years later, and I am blessed to have this kind of honor as a legacy for not just me, but my whole family and all of the young ones, and quite simply, I mean, you talked about my wife, and boy, I tell you, when she gets her mind set on something, and I used to worry sometimes, because she takes things seriously. She was also a principal of a school in South Bronx and so on, and all, she's seen the feel out there as it is, but she said, "We're gonna do this, you should do it, we want you to do it, I'll do it," and she did it, and here we are, and so she, with the support and help of our, my two sons, my two daughters, my niece was a daughter, I call them the quintessential quintet, and they are our base of support as well, and so now we're here. And my final, final note of appreciation, I don't know if I can do it, but I used to be able at one time to thank Steve, Steve Altman? Tatum, Tatum. Steve Tatum, Steve Wilson, right, Jennifer Hafenholm, Chanté, 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 Chanté Brody, or something like that, yes, yes, Françoise Derisse Lejeune, right, that's a good, and Terrell Walker, Corey Mills, Ruth Fortune, and did I already say, no, Krista Estrada Pérez. And I'm not gonna translate all that into Spanish, pero sí, gracias, pero, thank you so much. It is a dream, Chanté.
The next item on our agenda is item four-point-two, Contract Continuation Approval for Hartford Performs. The motion is that Hartford Board of Education authorize the superintendent to execute a contract with Hartford Performs for the term outlined in the contract not to exceed three hundred fifty-eight doll, excuse me, three hundred fifty-eight thousand, seven hundred and ten dollars, ending June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-six. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. I'll tag in Dr. Alsaki, Assistant Superintendent for Teaching and Learning.
That's green, right? Okay. Good evening, members of the board, Board Chair Brody and Superintendent Dr. Townsend. Thank you for the opportunity to share some information with you regarding Hartford Performs. I'm here with our Director of Elementary, Mario Corullo, and the Executive Director of Hartford Performs, Reeve Prior Campbell. We also have an administrator and teacher available in case there are additional questions. We presented this information at the last committee of the whole meeting, and so tonight is going to be a summary of what was discussed. Hartford Performs is not replaced in our current art programs, it is in addition to what our students are currently receiving. We're requesting three hundred and fifty-eight thousand, seven hundred and ten dollars from grant funding for this contract. Three hundred and fourteen thousand is for district programming, and it's through the Alliance Grant. Four thousand in additional programming for Breakthrough North is coming from the Magnet Extracurricular Grant, and forty thousand in additional programming is for McDonough School, and that's coming from their Commissioners Network Grant. Hartford Performs is in alignment with the district's priority and supports all four areas of the district's strategic plan. In regards to whole and healthy students, Hartford Perform provides arts-integrated experiences and fosters socio-emotional learning, encouraging a growth mindset in students. It also enhances reading comprehension by connecting arts activities to classroom content. In regards to expansive learning and opportunities, students gain hands-on experiences at theaters, museums, and historic sites, building background knowledge and making cultural connections to their studies. In regards to skilled and diverse teams, staff benefit from differentiated professional learning that increases their capacity to use arts-integrated teaching strategies. In regards to operational management excellence, the program leverages a three-to-one funding model, maximizing district investment by contributing two dollars for every one dollar invested. Some of the key benefits include enhanced student achievement and engagement through arts integration, broader access to enriching hands-on learning opportunities, increased teacher effectiveness via professional development, maximized return on investment through a favorable funding model. I will now have Reeve share a little background and the positive feedback we received from our staff regarding the program, as well as the additional funding they get for our program.
Thank you, Dr. Saki, and good evening, board members, Superintendent and Madam Chair. Hartford Performs has been really proud to partner with Hartford Public Schools since our inception. As a matter of fact, we were created at the request of this district to bring community resources into the schools to foster academic learning and social-emotional development. Hartford Public Schools is our entire focus and our reason for being. What we bring to students in Hartford is a network of dozens of community teaching artists and arts organizations whose programs are specifically created to support Hartford curriculum, to give students new ways of accessing academic content. So this is not, as Dr. Saki said, this is not arts instruction, this is using the arts to teach English, math, science, and other curriculum, and it's especially important this week, this is Arts in Education Week, and that is exactly what we do, we bring arts into education to teach academic subjects. We were created as a public-private partnership, so each year we secure hundreds of thousands of dollars in grants and contributions to subsidize this programming, heavily subsidize the programming, so effectively tripling your investment, Hartford Public Schools' investment in this work. This year, we plan to provide every classroom in pre-K to grade eight and elementary schools at least two curriculum-aligned programs. In K to five classrooms, our goal is that every program will be tied to a specific module in the Witten Wisdom Literacy Curriculum. Programs will take place both in classrooms and in, as field trips, in museums and theaters and historic homes, and this is many students' first experience with these organizations, and it connects them with the broader community, which is an important part of their education. Each school also will be able to select programming either for their arts and PE teachers or for the larger school community, including families. For the Foreign Neighborhood Middle For the foreign neighborhood middle schools, we'll provide project-based learning residencies that pair a teaching artist with a teacher for an entire academic marking period, allowing students to create something of substance, of something of significant performance or a body of work. And for teachers, we'll again provide professional learning. Most of those will focus on unified arts teachers, but some of them also will support classroom teachers with Witten Wisdom curriculum model, modules. We're really diligent in surveying teachers after every single program to measure results. And almost universally, teachers say that our programs increase students' interest in and knowledge of the subject matter. It builds vocabulary, and it builds skills, including active listening, critical evaluation, problem-solving, and verbal expression. Two-thirds of teachers say that our programs support attendance in schools. That's really important. And about forty percent say that seeing how students respond to what the teaching artists do gives them a new, gives them new ideas about how to engage their students more fully. We surveyed middle school students last year as well directly, and eighty-eight percent said that they learned a new skill with our programs, seventy-seven percent said they learned a new talent, and eighty-six percent said that they wanted to come to that class. They looked forward to coming to that class. So we really look forward this year to continuing these services for ten thousand students across thirty-one schools across the district. Thank you for considering this.
Thank you. Any board members have any questions? Ms. Fortune?
Thank you so much for the presentation. I wanted to reemphasize what you said, that this is a private-public partnership, and you secure private dollars to offer more services than we're paying for, so our students get more than we're allocating via this vote because you're getting these extra dollars. Can you speak a little bit more about the sources of those, the private sources for funding, and the amount? I know it's listed here, but for public consumptions, where everyone else can hear?
Sure. We, most of the money comes from grants. We also get money from contributions from individuals, but most of it is grant-funded. It comes from foundations such as Hartford Foundation for Public Giving, as well as smaller foundations. The amounts are anywhere from twenty-five hundred dollars to fifty thousand dollars to support this work. And we also get money from the federal government by the, via the National Endowment for the Arts and Community Development Block Grant from the city, and from corporations as well, such as Travelers.
Thank you. Anyone else? I'll just lift that. When I was working in the schools, the alignment to the curriculum was like really, is a game-changer. So I appreciated that part, that part of it, and I wanted to lift that. So if no other questions or discussion, the motion on the floor is that the Hartford Board of Education authorize the superintendent to execute a contract with Hartford Performs for the term outlined in the contract not to exceed three hundred fifty-eight thousand seven hundred ten dollars, ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Miss Derrin, nay? Abstention? The ayes have it, the motion moves. Thank you. And we're going to transition to item four point three. Contract continuation approval for Our Piece of the Pie, Opportunity Academy. And as folks are walking up, the motion is that the Hartford Board of Education authorize the superintendent to execute a contract with Our Piece of the Pie for the term outlined in the contract at an amount not to exceed six hundred sixty thousand dollars, ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. Do I have a motion? So moved.
Second.
And I will tag in Liliana Cuevas, Director of Post-Secondary and Alternative Programming.
Good evening, board members, Superintendent, and Madam Chair. Congratulations. Thank you for having us here today. Our Piece of the Pie, through its academy engages overage and undercredited students in achieving their academic goals. They provide a comprehensive support, including youth development, post-secondary preparation opportunities, and academic program that emphasizes technology and project-based learning. HPS has maintained a partnership with Our Piece of the Pie since two thousand nine, and tonight we have our partners, Principal Tamika Mack, excuse me, Grant Mack, and Senior Director, Mr. Gerard Tarson. For any questions. Madam Chair, I pass it back to you for any questions from our partners.
And I know we had the opportunity to have an in-depth conversation during committee, but did any board members want to ask questions this evening? Mr. Walker?
Thank you. Just for public consumption, I wanted you to speak to the average number of students in the program. It's not totally clear here in the contract, but I think you can share how many students have and anticipate to be part of the program. Thank you.
For the last school year, for the twenty-four, twenty-five year, we touched seventy-four students. Our current enrollment as of today is thirty-eight. Our contract holds for seventy-five students, so we are working with HPS in the referral process to engage more students.
Thank you.
Follow-up to that. Maybe if you explain how throughout the year, more students, when referrals come in, and like the trend maybe, to help those watching understand how that works too.
Sure, absolutely. We have a process in place, and we are, okay. We have a process in place through our alternative referral program that we, we have with, within our high schools. So we meet on a bi-weekly basis to, to review any referrals that are coming through. At this point, we have about twenty-five students that are in the process of being vetted, to ensure that this is the correct program. Students in school council or social works that are administrators meet with our students and our families to ensure that they are in agreement to explore Opportunity Academy. And so bi-weekly, referrals are made, are reviewed, our students go through an interview with Opportunity Academy, where Opportunity Academy has the opportunity to meet with our students and families to explain the process, and as they review their transcripts and create a plan, an individualized plan to meet the needs of our students. And that's an ongoing process throughout the year. Obviously, our focus is to ensure that we have our students placed before the end of the first quarter to ensure that they can get into Opportunity Academy and get to work and, oh my goodness gracious, recover their credits that they need, create the plans so that they are able to graduate and meet their needs. So I'm not sure if OBP has any thoughts to add on the process of the recruitment?
Not at this time.
Thank you. I thought, Ms. Fortune, did you have, where you had a question, I thought? I saw you reaching for the microphone.
My question was partially answered with respect to enrollment and how do we ramp up to seventy-five since we're committing to paying for a minimum of seventy-five students? I recall having this meeting last year to renew the contract. It was fairly contentious in terms of the cost per pupil for this program. So if you could speak more about what goes into you assisting an overage, undercredit student so that they could make it to graduation? What is that process? What are the resources that you pour into each child?
One of the major resources that we utilize is our youth development specialist. Our youth development specialist spends thirty hours per year, which balances out to about thirty-two minutes a week on each youth. And, and that, and during that time, we work on socio-emotional issues. They work on barrier reduction, and they work on setting goals for academics and attendance. We also utilize the, our teaching staff to help put in prevent, interventions because there are students that have gaps, academic gaps, and working with them to obtain their credit. We mostly credit recovery in their initial credit.
Mr. Wilson?
So I know that a lot of times, I know a lot of times, some of the roadblocks for these students is attendance. Can you speak to how this program assists in that? Right? So you talked about going through the vetting process and getting the parents on board, but I'm still, I'm sure it's still a struggle. How do you go about the business of ensuring that the kids are coming in and they're meeting the requirements of the program?
So one of the, again, with that, the biggest piece is our youth development specialist. And so they make phone calls and text messages to students prior to the start of the school day. They, that happens for all of the students and reaching out to families as well, and that continues out through the start time of the school day. And then we continue with setting goals. Our school social worker works with students to, and our school counselor works with students so that we can kind of identify what it is that's causing the attendance issues, and we encourage that relationship. It's really big about relationship building for Opportunity Academy and our students, and so that has also helped to increase attendance. And so we utilize a variety of strategies just to engage them and let them know that they are an important part, and we, we reach out daily, and we also do home visits, and we work with community partners. I believe I mentioned at the community of the whole that Compass and other organizations that provide assistance to some of our students. We are engaged in conversations with them about their students' attendance as well.
Thank you.
Miss Derris still at here?
Thank you so much, and thank you for the presentation. I have a question with regards to, once they graduate, what, or, and what are you doing to prepare these young people for after, post-graduation, should they graduate? Because oftentimes, this may be a last resort. They may feel defeated, if you will, at times. They may feel a bit hopeless, and they may wonder, what's the point of getting, what's the point of finishing? What's, what comes afterwards? So if you can tell me how you prepare these students for that?
Yes. Good afternoon, good evening, board members, Superintendent, and congratulations, Ms. Brody. Yes, so what happens is during the orientation phase, students create a post-secondary plan. So this is upon entrance into the school, and they meet with the school counselor, as well as our post-secondary specialist, to set up a plan. They do an interest inventory to figure out what they like, and they may find out some things that they thought they liked that they don't like. So then that plan will go into effect, and essentially throughout the year, they will revisit the plan on a quarterly basis to make sure that they're still moving towards that plan. We do college tours. We do tours to places that have skills training. We have the military come in. We do workshops around job readiness. And upon graduation, every, a hundred percent of our students have a post-secondary plan, and they bring that plan to fruition. So we make sure that they connect to a program. When students graduate, that doesn't mean the end of Opportunity Academy. They go on to OPP. They may get a new youth development specialist who will continue to work with them as needed.
Follow-up question. Have you been tracking these, these individuals? Once they graduate, where are they one year from now, two years, two years from now, five years from now? And what is, what are the numbers?
So I don't have the numbers with me, but I will say that we do have retention services. So we follow students up until the first quarter of whatever post-secondary option they go into, and we, we keep track of that, and we continue to make phone calls for, for the year. And then once they are settled for that year, then we, then we dismiss them out of the program. So I can get some numbers to you, but today I'm not prepared to speak to the numbers of how many or what places they went to for post-secondary.
Thank you so much. I just want to give individuals who may be looking at Opportunity Academy as an option and feel hopeful that they will be successful.
Thank you.
Ms. Fortune?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I do have one question. So I understand thirty-eight students are currently enrolled. We're committed to a minimum of seventy-five. What is, I guess it's more for HPS, what is the expected timeframe for us to ramp up to the seventy-five?
Well, our hope is to, and all the work that's going into is to have our students placed by the end of the first quarter, and hoping that maybe within the first, you know, the beginning of the second quarter. So we do have, like I said, about twenty-five students right now that are being vetted, and we'll be moving forward to our OPP staff to then interview. So our hope is to have them, at least fifty, if not more, by the end of the first quarter.
What were the numbers this time last year, just for comparison's sake, or two years prior? Is it usually starting this low and then ramping up? So this time last year, was it thirty-eight students roughly enrolled? Was it twenty-five? Was it fifty? I'm just trying to gauge because that's, that's less than half, so that, well, that's almost exactly half.
So again, I don't have the numbers with me, but I can say that it was probably between fifty and sixty-five, somewhere up in there.
So we're down double digits in terms of students who started the program last year versus this year? I just want to be clear on where we are, okay? Do you think we will reach the seventy-five this year?
I think we will, yes. And we do have a plan in place to, to, to make sure that we, we meet that number.
So let's say we go the whole first quarter, we don't reach seventy-five, but at some point in the fourth quarter, we exceed seventy-five and we're at eighty. Do we have to pay for this, these additional five students, given that we've been under seventy-five for a prolonged period of time? Are you taking weighted averages for attendance, or the second we go over seventy-five at any moment in time, we have to pay more money?
So I believe there is a weighted structure for students at each quarter.
At each quarter? So if one quarter goes over seventy-five, that means we're paying over, even though this first quarter, we likely won't even reach seventy-five. Is that your understanding as well?
The Superintendent wants to add comments.
So all I want to share is, I think we have to hit seventy-five in each quarter, you know, and I know where it is, what it is right now, but whatever we can do to add value there, to kind of lean in, because, you know, return on investment, we talking about over a half a million dollars. So what's the academic return on that investment? Because the question is, the great question, why are we down this time compared to last year? That's A R O I right there. But happy to lean in, and I'll probably meet with the team, as well as OPP, to know what I don't know, to add value there, to ensure that we get that return.
Thank you.
Ruth, you have another follow-up?
Yes. So thank you, Superintendent, for adding that. I'd be curious for us to follow the numbers, and if we do end up having a prolonged period of time of being under seventy-five, next year, when we're reviewing the contract, I would like it to be structured such that we're taking the average of the four quarters so that we're not paying any additional fees until we've reached the seventy-five throughout all the quarters. And if we don't reach it this year, then we should consider lowering that number so that we have a lower base cost, so that-
so that we're only paying for students we're educating. Because paying for this means another program is not being funded, other opportunities are, are, are being, are not being funded. So I, I, I think you're doing great work. I've heard wonderful testimonies about how moving graduation is um through this program and how terrific the work is. But I do, as a fiduciary for the school, I do wanna make sure that our dollars are going towards educating students, not to cover base overhead for a program.
Thank you, Miss Fortune.
Thank you, Chairman woman. Um yeah, I wanted to echo what Board Member Fortune said too. I think part of what we wanna make sure that you're all collecting in terms of your data is at least three years or four years out. The, like how many students per, for a year, how many students per quarter, what is the average? Because I think the question that I have here, it's a big amount of money. And so if we, for example, don't hit the mark, we don't get any of that money back. But if we do go over in one or two quarters to her, to uh Board Member Fortune's point, uh we actually have to end up paying more. So there's some inequities here and how that, from what I understand, and I could be wrong, please correct me if I'm wrong. Um but I will say that I think in terms of data collection processes, I think at least of the last four years, the average amount of students per quarter and maybe even a list of, of how it is that you all go about um recruiting students, making sure those paths are fulfilled, so that we know what your goals and the way in which you navigate that process um is. And any hiccups that you may have along the way, because I think it's gonna be really important, because it is a big amount of overhead. Um and we also recognize, and I think the other part that I would want is a little more details, and I appreciate your answers on what those um attendance and um support systems for students. But if part of that conver, that one-page your conversation includes a very detailed account of what those support systems look like in, in practice, I think that helps tell the story of why the dollars are going to where. And, and, and it's a better understanding for us, at least for me, and how it is that we can move, right? Because um, yeah, I just wanna make sure that, that, that's happening.
Mister Tatum?
Thank you, um I'm in support of continuing this contract and um in large part because of how essential it is that we, as, as a school system, um have an ability to, to reach some of the students that aren't being reached by the, I believe, too narrow constraints of the traditional academic path uh through school. And so I applaud the efforts that OPP makes in, along those lines. It is, and, and I think I resonate with the, the questions about the funding and the resources and, and, and the return on investment. Um especially, you know, in the wake of, I think we, we all remember last year that this program was identified as, as a possible um high-risk reduction in budget cuts and will be likely facing similar challenges again in a few months here, looking at, looking at the budget. And I, I certainly hope that we can prioritize um a program like yours that serves students and serves students that, that otherwise would fall through the cracks. And, and um it's clearly the right thing to do on a number of, number of levels, not least long-term financially. Uh but um, yeah, just, just keep me in mind that it's always in, in those conversations. And I'm glad that funding came through and we're able to approve this contract here tonight. And I believe, sorry, I believe that funding came through in part through additional dollars from the city. Uh one-time funds, I believe, from the city that, uh that was appropriated. So, you know, I think, I think I'm correct, and, and someone can correct me if I'm wrong, that we're able to approve this contract in part because of the hard work that was done at the city level to uh close the gap that was uh identified by this board and the former superintendent as part of last year's budget cycle. So I'm glad that we can continue the work for this year and hope that we can um find ways to continue the necessary needed work going forward from here.
Thank you.
And last thing, I owe you a visit. I promise that I will get there in the next three, two, three, four months.
Door is always open.
I'll make it happen.
We're good. I, and I wanted to say it was one of your parents, because when we advocated at the um City of Hartford budget, you had a parent who, because we were like the last speakers of the night, and you had a parent that weathered that and because she felt it was that important to say what it meant to her daughter. And without the program, um she, she would not have graduated. So that was a testament that she was waiting hours and hours just to make um the city um council and mayor aware um of what the program meant to her family. So the motion on the floor is that the Hartford Board of Education authorize the superintendent to execute a contract with our piece of the pie for the term outlined in the contract at an amount not to exceed six hundred sixty thousand dollars, ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any nays? Any abstentions? The ayes have it, the motion moves. Item four point four, um lease agreement continuation. Rico, I'm assuming I'm saying that, Rico? Rico. The motion is that the Hartford Board of Education authorize the superintendent to execute a contract with Rico for the term outlined in the contract not to exceed six hundred fifty thousand dollars per year, ending June thirtieth, twenty thirty. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
And could someone explain to me um why we're going multiple years on a contract? Um when we normally keep it to one year? And I don't think it, I don't know if it's the gentleman that, that are sitting before us. Um does anybody, can anybody offer some background on that?
Uh yes, Board Member Brody, uh and Chairperson, congratulations, uh hello, Board Member, Superintendent. Um it's been a great day for me as a Puerto Rican, seeing her in La Fontaine, so I want that in the record. Thank you very much for your vote, uh and unanimous vote. We put out the press release just now for everybody to know. Um Christina, do we have the, do you have the slides? You don't have slides? So my understanding is that because of constructions, many machines have been, or some machines have been added along the years. Uh and some of these contracts will automatically renovate every year unless we renegotiate. Uh as to why it is five years, I know Board Member Mills asked for a one-year and, and right to go, go for the six hundred fifty thousand, uh which is the yearly lease amount. Uh but if, if Mister um Maxi, Al Maximino is the Rico rep, and I also have our tech guru for Hartford Public Schools, Dave Draxel, here, because I know Board Member Fortune had a question as to how we assess if we have the right equipment uh to address the need or if we have uh too much equipment. So uh could you explain a bit about the five-year lease?
Good evening. Uh the implementation of the fleet that's currently in place began in twenty nineteen. At that point, the majority of the MFPs, copiers that were uh placed within the school system were owned by Hartford Public Schools. So we went on a process of implementing a print management software so we could control the number of copies, get a better idea who was making copies. And we staggered the implementation plan. It was done over a four-year plan, basically because you had a couple of schools that were transforming. Uh and we also had construction that was going on. So it was almost impossible to implement all the MFPs in the same timeline. So they were done as needed. The first implementation was strictly the staff rooms in all the schools that the teachers utilized. Uh the last implementation was the main offices in all the schools so that all the main offices had the same devices. Over the last five years, we've uh driven down the cost pretty significantly. Uh with the implementation of the print management software, the volume has reduced pretty dramatically in the school systems. It's close to a twenty percent reduction in copies and prints that have been made over the last five years. What's in front of you is not a five-year lease program. Uh that six hundred fifty thousand dollars represents the annual expense for the next year. Uh I believe, and Dave can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that was part of the budget that was approved earlier. So that encompasses all hundred fifty MFPs and encompasses the print center uh that you have located off Weathersfield Avenue. It includes all parts, service, and support. The only thing it does not include is the paper that you copy or print onto. So I'm just trying to give you an idea of what the total program looks like. It's not a single contract for six hundred fifty thousand dollars. It's various contracts have been implemented over the last four or five years. So I don't know if that answers your question, but I can give you all the background. Uh I've supported the State of Connecticut contract for the last twenty-five years. I've been engaged with Hartford Public Schools uh for the last twenty-five years as well.
Questions, Miss Darestel Lajer?
Thank you so much. As, and well, first looking at, I, I, I did the math. Um I just added up the six hundred fifty thousand for, you know, for five, you know, in, in five years, that's three million two hundred fifty thousand dollars. So as an educator, as someone who utilizes copy machines, um not in Hartford Public Schools, but in another district, um and having had worked for Hartford Public Schools, when the printers would kind of get jammed or there were certain issues. Now, does this include um toner? Does this include people coming out? And I'm talking about specifically for the copy machines, because I'm thinking about the teachers who may have, you know, certain testing that needs to be done or whatever, that or, you know, worksheets or things like that. And also, does this include like print shop when you send the paper, when you send the, the, um, the jobs to a certain department? Does it include that?
Uh yes, it does. The program is all-inclusive except for the paper. It provides for onsite service, onsite training. The other thing it includes is when we uh implement your software, your PaperCut software, which the school system owns, we also integrate the device that, there's no charge for that, that's included in what we provide. And as far as the teachers, there's both onsite training and there's how-to videos, uh how-to videos to help them uh operate the devices themselves. So everything's included, onsite service, all toner, all service, all support. The only thing that excludes is the paper. And as far as the print shop, yes. They also now have a job ticketing software that allows the schools to send the work directly to the print shop. Uh the work is then done and then delivered back to the schools.
Follow-up question. And are you, like, do you pay for that? Or does this six hundred fifty thousand dollars a year include the transportation from, from print shop to the school who ordered the work?
No, that's, that's a service that the school system provides. You've got a courier that visits every school every day. So it's produced in the print center. There's a job ticket that the uh school or the end user uh generates. It's received at the print center, there's a dashboard. They see exactly what the job is, they turn it around, and then they deliver it within twenty-four to forty-eight hours.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, it's not us transporting it, that's your folks.
Thank you.
Board Member Fortune?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I also wanted to hear from our uh internal IT person who does liaise with our staff just to hear about what the user experience is and um suitability of equipment on various sites and so on.
Sure, so when we um were looking at where to outfit the MFPs in the buildings, um we took feedback from staff. Um we placed the printers based on student count, staff count, uh physical location in the building to ensure that there's easy access to a printer, copier, um regardless of where you are in the building. The overall user experience has been good, uh experience has been, uh feedback on the experience has been positive, um especially once we have implemented the uh PaperCut print management system. Uh one of the big benefits of the PaperCut system is that it allows uh users to have a secure release. So instead of queuing up your print job and it just disappears out of printer because it comes out right when you click print on your computer, uh you submit that into a queue, um and then the user can then swipe their ID badge at the printer to securely uh release the job at the printer.
Thank you. Mister Walker?
Yeah, uh thank you, uh Madam Chair. Yes, I wanted to, to follow up on uh that user experience. I want to ask, I sup, I support this and I understand what he's offering in the end, the whole printer solution, but there's still delivery to teachers. So I'm, I'm, I'm asking to talk a little bit about um the potential to, to, to strengthen the kind of network within the school-based site so that teachers' computers all over the school can actually, you know, throw jobs right from the classroom to the local printer. Um and to, to ask, right, is if there's opportunity to strengthen that? And if there's a process and a way that, that schools get to assess and say, hey, we need a color printer, maybe, maybe we won't have a col, a, a, a black and white printer. I'm only asking these questions because the whole value of this is that we're delivering maximum value to the instructional staff that needs to use this or central office staff. So I'm only offering at this moment um to consider some of these other things that would enhance for the six hundred fifty thousand dollars. If people can't totally hit a button and, and get it out to a, a printer or if they don't have right at their hand a color printer, right? The other thing I'd ask is if there's a way to make a service-level agreement where if a person needs a rush job, can they get it within the same day versus waiting two days? Because the value of that instructional material may be enhanced if I can guarantee I can get it for the very next day, my class. So I want, want you to maybe just talk about that, um and what that's been thought about and can we think about those as ways to enhance what we're paying for here?
Yeah, one of the things that we did five years ago, it was led by John Fergus at the time, is without a print management system, you had color printer copiers throughout many of the schools. And they're really being used as print centers. They were producing uh color copies and color prints that really didn't need to be produced. So one of the things that we did back in twenty nineteen is all the schools, the color copiers capability was removed except for the Montessori schools, all right, Annie Fisher and Bachelor. Those two were using them strictly uh for curriculum. Uh so all the colored devices were taken out. With the game plan, we're gonna put a print management system in play. We're gonna put a job ticketing uh system in play. So if someone needs color copy, color prints, they send them to Marcos in the print center. He produces them at a significantly less cost per print, and we made that transition. So all of those MFPs that are in main offices throughout the school locations are being replaced this year with color-capable devices. Because one of the things we found out is that the schools do have some one-off printing needs for certificates to recognize students, we understand that's important. The other thing that did happen is that a lot of schools went out and bought color printers, which they couldn't afford to run because those cartridges cost so much. So by putting a color MFP in the school, you're reducing the cost, you're giving them more capability, and it's gonna be in the main office location. So every school, every main office location will have a device that has color, print, color, copy capability.
Yeah, yeah, thank you, that does kinda answer, that explains why. And it's a good response, um based on what you found out.
And the other thing I wanna mention is, and Dave deserves credit for this, with John Fergus, the print management system that you put in place not only reduced the number of wasted copies, because prior, when someone hit the print button on their computer, it printed. So now it goes to an on-premise server, they have to walk up to the device, authenticate with their ID, and then that job's released. I can't tell you how many times they hit the print button and they never walk up to release the job. If it's not printed, within twenty-four to forty-eight hours, it disappears. That in itself not only made your printing more secure, it reduced a significant your printing more secure, it reduced a significant amount of wasted copies.
Thank you. That's a really good explanation to my questions.
I don't see any more lighted microphones. So, the motion on the floor is that the Hartford Board of Education authorize the superintendent to execute a contract with RICO for the term outlined in the contract not to exceed $650,000 per year, ending June 30th, 2030. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any nays? Abstentions? The ayes have it. The motion moves. Item 4.5, thank you, gentlemen. Item 4.5, first reading. Policy 121212, school volunteers. Policy number 5141.28, sudden cardiac arrest. And policy 5141.7, student sports concussion. Ms. Fortune, did you want to add anything to these first reads?
Sure. Thank you, Madam Chair. On the policy for school volunteers, 4541.28, this is an update to a current policy, last modified in 2004 to bring in alignment with current practices. It clarifies applicable policies that apply to volunteers. It lists categories of volunteers, and it adds an appeal process to district safety team if volunteer request is denied. And I know earlier today, we also heard from a parent, Ms. Angelica Maddox, about her input to the volunteers' policy, school volunteers' policy. And we will have a chance to visit that during the second reading and take into account her very thoughtful feedback.
Mr. Tatum?
For public consumption, could we be reminded of the date of the next policy committee meeting, when this policy will be discussed further?
I don't have that from memory, but I believe Ms. Santiago has that that she can provide. And Ms. Santiago, if you could invite Ms. Maddox to that meeting, October 6th. So next policy meeting is October 6th, and we'll have the second reading of the school volunteers' policy. Thank you, Board Member Tatum.
Yep. And just to make a point, that, like, this is a policy, obviously, that does have a direct impact on parents' involvement and community members' involvement in schools, which is part of our strategic plan to, like, increase those relationships and wraparounds for our students. So please, if anybody has comments about this policy, get in contact with any of the board members, ideally ahead of that October 6th meeting, so that we can incorporate that feedback in any revisions that happen at that committee meeting.
Thank you, Board Member Tatum. And I misspoke earlier. So this policy is policy 1212. The next policy that we have the first reading for is 4541.28, sudden cardiac arrest. This is a policy for Hartford Public Schools that was adapted from the CAAB model policy. CAAB is the Connecticut Association for Boards of Education. Hartford Public Schools have been following cardiac arrest prevention guidance as required by CSTE, the Connecticut State Department of Education. This codifies those policies in the Hartford Public Schools' own policies. The policy contains awareness education program information, training requirements, and consent forms that include a summary of the sudden cardiac arrest program, and applicable board policies on sudden cardiac arrests. It also deals with the removal and return to play guidance for student athletes. Lastly, the third policy for first reading is the student sports concussion policy, 5141.7. This is a new policy for Hartford Public Schools that was adapted from, again, a CAAB model policy. HPS has been following the concussion education plan and other guidelines from the state, NCIAC, since 2015, when the new regulations were put in place, which are outlined in this policy to include initial training course on concussions required of coaches, as well as a requirement for an annual review by coaches, parents, guardians, and student athletes of relevant and current information regarding concussions prior to participating/coaching.
Thank you. And as this is the first reading, no vote is required at this time. So now we're moving to our consent agenda. The consent agenda has several contracts and policy readings that were discussed in committee. Is 5.2, acceptance of funds and contract approval for the family resource centers. The board annually accepts funds from the State of Connecticut, Department of Education, to run five family resource centers. 5.3, contract continuation for Raptor Technologies. This is for the visitor and volunteer management platform. 5.4, acceptance of funds and contract approval from NEAG grant, Lepar consultant at Renzulli. Renzulli sought a grant to contract with an enrichment consultant for students. The next policies were discussed in the August and September committees, and are now up for a second read and adoption. 5.5, second reading and adoption for policy 5141, student health services. It's updated to reflect the current practice. 5.6, second reading and adoption for policy 5141, for opiate overdose prevention. This is a new policy for HPS, adapted from the CAAB model, although the district has had the protocols reflected in this policy in place since 2022. And I don't know, is there a number, because they seem to have the same number?
It has a .213.
.3, okay. And 5.7, approval of the minutes from August 19, 2025. Any comments or questions on the consent agenda from anyone? Ms. Derriselle Lederer?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. So according to the document that we all have, 5.6 reads the second reading and adoption, and the number is 5141.213, opioid overdose prevention. And 5.7 is the second reading and adoption, and that one is 5141.3, health assessments. And then 5.8 is approval of minutes for August 19, 2025.
Thank you. And Ms. Fortune?
Thank you, Madam Chair. On item 5.4, acceptance of funds and contract approval for the NEAG grant for Renzulli, I believe Dr. White is in the audience. I just would like her to stand and be recognized for going above and beyond for applying for $70,000 to go into our school to support her students. She took that initiative upon herself and pursued it, wrote the grant, sought assistance in doing it, and it's just admirable, and it's refreshing to see our educators going above and beyond the call of duty to bring the necessary resources into their schools and the classrooms in our schools. So please feel free to stand and be recognized.
Thank you. I don't see any other hands. Do I have a motion to vote on the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Abstentions? The ayes have it. And I believe that concludes our meeting, our September meeting. Have a great evening.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
We are adjourned, folks.
We're adjourned. Yeah, I want to vote on it.